Let me call this meeting to order. Let's start off with a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands on which we stand, and to God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's a very limited group, everybody.
Now, we have, Mike, are you on there?
Yes, I am.
Good. Kathy, are you on there? Kathy?
I'm here, Eric. I must come up there until it's 4:00 PM. I will.
Dr. Hendricks, you're on there?
I'm on there. I can't hear very good. I'm gonna put you to hang up and hold it to my ear to be able to hear today.
Can you pull it over? Yeah, pull one of those over there. We always start with introductions and recognition of visitors. Are there any visitors or any recognition? That's fine, okay.
John Hendrick. How's Julie?
No, very good. Very, very good. We always start our board meetings with reading the mission statement. Dodge City Community College provides a student-centered learning environment where students can achieve their educational, personal, and career goals.
That's what Mike said, just to try to get them to refine their base. So he said they'll be okay. He said they're on. Okay.
Dr. Hendricks, can you hear better?
All right, I hear you a lot better now, yeah.
Okay, very good. Very good. Remarks from the audience. It is the policy of the board to provide an opportunity for individuals or groups to appear before the board with the purpose of presenting a request or concern for the board's consideration. An individual desiring to comment shall provide his or her name and verify that they are from a resident of Ford County for the purpose of putting both in minutes of the meeting. The chairman of the board may limit the time to each individual to comment based upon the number of people wishing to speak and the amount of time available for the public comment portion of the meeting. Are there, is there anyone here that would like to speak? Hearing none, we'll start our meeting. Approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to poll a couple of things on the consent agenda. I just have a couple of questions under A, item C, and under B, item three.
You have approved the minutes, right?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the February meeting.
All those in papers, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay. Any comments? Approved. Okay, Dan.
I wanted to poll items on the consent agenda. Under A, item C, A1C, and under B, item three. I have some questions on those things.
Okay. Did you get those, Carla? Did y'all hear that? Reports of the Board of Trustees, please call in. We don't have, we don't have, we don't have students here, so we won't have a student governor report. Trustees report. Mr. Lewis?
Well, I've informed the board that this month I went and visited with Dr. Tatro, the, looking at building his electrical area and his costly HVAC area. We went toured the building, water true value, the one that's the east building of that, where it used to be the furniture store. And then we looked at the area that USD 443 is going to vacate once they get their new administration building up and running, I believe that's COVID-19 Learning Center.
Yep.
And then we went out and visited the, oh gosh, what was it? The Chattoons old building. Kind of sad. Anyway, it's really sad that running that building was so nice back in its day. It's really, so anyway, spent some time with him and gave some ideas. So I guess that's pretty well what I've done.
Dan?
I attended the Broadway local music performances, and we had a nice crowd there. The program was extremely well done and very enjoyable. Mr. Kublick's teaching abilities and his professionalism at this concert were just outstanding, and it was a very good evening, very good evening. The students were wonderful. They did a great job performing. They just did a great job.
Dr. Hendricks?
I can't think of anything else. My vision preoccupied with COVID-19 for the last couple of weeks, so if I did do something in the last month, I can't remember it.
Thank you, sir. trustee Kublick? Oh, no.
I'd like to publicly say every, well, every one of you has done an outstanding job in preparing the committee for COVID-19 and what the college has done. That was an outstanding committee, and everyone worked so hard and committed to it so that I want compliments of faculty and to have had the administration of the college.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I agree with everything Maya said.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, General Chairman, for standing in under these circumstances. Just as was stated before, I do like to, want to commend, you know, your administration for your leadership in dealing with this issue. I know you and I, and I was exchanging a lot of emails and different ideas about how should we should go about protecting our students and faculty under these circumstances. And hearing about other things that are happening in different parts of the country and different levels of engagement under these circumstances really tells me that, you know, you guys are on top of this, doing a marvelous job. So thank you for that. Thank you for your leadership, Dr. Nolte. And we will get through this. But you know, we're doing things for the safety of our students and our employees. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Very much, very much. Well, I just want to thank the faculty and the staff and the administration, as well as the students, for doing what they're doing. And this has been a tough, I don't think I've ever in my career been into a situation like this. And so a lot of schools were not as prepared as we seem to have been. And I appreciate and applaud everybody, all the things they've done. It hit us pretty much right during spring break, and we were having to do some things. And students performed wonderfully by getting out of the residence halls, and everything is online. I'll let Jane and I'll let Clayton talk a little bit about what they've done. But I know this is going to be a financial hit for us, but we've worked very hard in getting some things done. And this is, this will turn this into an opportunity. And so that's what you have to do. You have to turn, you know, some things like this into opportunities. And so we look forward to working with you guys. Thank you for your support, your moral support, your trust in us. And so with that said, Jane, do you want to talk a little bit about, about what you're doing in the, for the administration side?
Sure. We are transitioning all of our classes to online delivery. The faculty, especially by the division chairs, were notified last week of this decision. And so the campus did extend spring break for students by two days. And so students were asked not to return to classes until, we'll have it down, but not as, on Monday as they had planned. And the faculty then had two days, yesterday and today, to meet with each other, either face-to-face or remotely, to make that shift. I feel really fortunate that most of our, all of our academic faculty have taught online and elsewhere and/or here, and so making that shift was facilitated by that. Not all of our faculty teach, have been teaching all of their course load online, but they maybe have to retreat classes, for instance, teaching outreach or otherwise. And so they've been so wonderful to work with, appreciating the need to do this and to do it smoothly, and with the interest and needs of students being their primary focus. And so they have teamed up for those who have little-to-know experience with the online instruction. We were able to share resources to make that easier. They put together mentoring systems, and they've also been very helpful in working with the outreach faculty we have, helping them make that shift as well as needed. I really appreciate the willingness of Dr. Forte and IT to help us purchase some additional resources to facilitate that. One example is the math department, science department are concerned about the integrity of their classes. And you know, when you're working alone, there might be a temptation to do something that maybe you wouldn't do in a face-to-face setting. So the math-science department recommended a screen monitoring software that we've been able to purchase, and it will be available to all those online courses. And it basically locks down the monitor, so if someone is taking a test, they can't shift over to Google and search out the answer. So it's been exciting to see the sharing of that kind of information. They're doing a lot of conversation on email with each other, offering tips and support. And we've had students, of course, who are concerned about who don't have the technology they may need. And so we were able to loan laptops to those who identify themselves and need. One of our students is out there, finding a quiet place to study for the evening, and he'll be issued a laptop in the morning. So overall, I'm really excited at how the transition has gone. We communicate a lot, send their, I'm starting to tell them, you know, with this email sent down that lasts a while this evening, so it'll take you a while to read it, but want to share them, with them as much information as I can, what resources are becoming available, what the changing climate in the community is in terms of meeting with students or not meeting with students. So to sum up, I'd like to thank you all for your support of this transition, and colleagues across the campus, and especially would like to commend the faculty for the way they've really stepped up to this occasion. They really do have the students' interests and their needs at heart.
Thank you, Jane. Dick Clayton?
Dick?
Please, thank you. Clayton? Thank you.
And I'll step out since that's ten.
Dr. Tatro, we, Jane just got through talking about her, what she's been doing.
Sure. Where's the phone? The microphone be ready. Good evening. Really proud of our team on the tech head side. We had a stand-up meeting outside on the front lawn yesterday at 8:00 in the morning. Thought it would be about a 30-minute meeting, went about an hour, and probably a couple hours by the time we got done with questions. Ag, criminal justice?
Why don't you come up here?
Agriculture, criminal justice, and early childhood, made the decision to go fully online early, so we're in good shape there. Cosmetology has since been mandated by the Kansas Board of Cosmetology to go fully online two weeks through April 6th. That's as far as we've gotten with the KBOC guidance and regulation there. Welding has made the decision to get caught up with theory and go online for probably two weeks. We'll see where they are. We'll see where the crisis is in terms of any orders or any guidance that way. Diesel is going face-to-face. We've got six in the morning, five in the afternoon, small groups, the students plus the instructors, spread out, social distancing. We will be doing a protocol screening with every student every day. So the plan right now is that they will be given a series of questions that they will have to check, and then they will sign, we'll have the students sign and date. We will have, we will have their temperature taken before they go into the lab. Right now, the plan is that Michelle Haley, who's our director of allied health and nursing, will be the one doing the temperatures. She'll do a visual assessment of them. She'll have her stethoscope ready. If there's any symptoms, she'll be able to take breath sounds and chest sounds and go from there. If there's any question, the students will be sent on to the health department. So we feel really good about that. And then truck driving, we're going to do in-class lecture and really buckle down and do our pre-trip, do all the backing, and do their permit in a much more concentrated manner. Michelle will be going down there as well. Students will take the protocol, they'll sign the protocol, we'll do the temperature check. If there's any question in terms of physical symptoms, then we'll do the stethoscope and go from there. We are purposely, adamantly adhering to very strict social distancing and all of the other guidance. My understanding from what I'm seeing and what I'm reading, we are about one of four institutions out of the 26 that are looking at doing any type of face-to-face. I would have told you, we probably would have had five programs that would have been looking at face-to-face. Right now, we only have two to start. Nursing is all but online. It's amazing how all of this has evolved since even Thursday last week. On Thursday last week, we had clinical sites, both for CNA, Certified Nurse Aid, and nursing, who were calling us and telling us, please don't come. And then we had other sites that were saying, we'll take you. Anytime you have a site stop, we will gladly take you. Well, by Sunday and Monday, that'll change, as it should have. So I think those, those are probably, those students right there are probably our biggest question mark. What does that mean for graduation? What does that mean for licensure? What does that mean for students moving on to an R and BSN program? What does that look like for prerequisites? What does that look like for the incoming class? So in terms of anxiety, that is real and rational from a program standpoint. We've probably got the most questions for nursing. The rest of the programs, it's a little bit of a wait-and-see. Diesel's really trying to get their hands on IN and get all their competencies done before they go to their ASE certifications. Welding wants to see kind of where we are in the next two weeks. So Patrick Schuh with building construction has probably been the most regular in checking in with me and making sure that everything's good there. He's going to have a stand-up meeting with his students tomorrow and kind of get an idea from them. The plan is right now that he'll go Zoom, and then depending on what the students want and the student needs, we'll probably do some social distancing there. He knows all about the protocol. So really, really proud of our team. Could not be more pleased with how this all came together. I think as you look at the evolution, taking the time that we did was important because some of this has changed the last week. And, and our team knows that it could all change tomorrow.
You know, I have a question. Clayton, what these people like buildings? Are you telling them two weeks, and then you're going to reevaluate? Or do you put a timeframe in there? Or like nursing, you know, you say, we'll reevaluate the 15th of April or something?
We have, we have been really purposeful in not putting dates on. KBOC is the only one so far that has put any type of a date out there, and that's April 6th. Building, construction, diesel, and welding are all thinking two weeks roughly. Our thinking there is that we'll know a heck of a lot more in two weeks than we know today. Either things are, either we can see an end, or we know we're so far into the fray of this that it's not going to work.
And you have options, running diesel or even welding stuff into the summer? You have to change your contracts or anything on that?
Yeah, definitely. The reality is that we've got spaces available. We've got the size of our enrollments right now. I mean, I'm thrilled that we're, if this happened now as opposed to next year, because we know our enrollment's going to be double in most cases next year. We have not done a lot in the summer, so we have that opportunity. I do think you're going to see a lot of nursing incompletes that are going to come into the summer and do. We have some flexibility with diesel and welding, and even with building construction in terms of competencies and making sure that we can do that. KBOC with cosmetology, it's 1,500 hours. We will have to take the guidance from the Kansas Board of Nursing in terms of how they approach this. I think everybody's estimating that nursing is going to be a longer process. We'll just have to see on the others. We've got small groups, and that's helping us right now. It really is. But again, just really proud of the, proud of the instructor.
And any more questions for Clayton, for Jane? Bev, unfortunately today, is sick, so she's not able to be here. But she did want you to know that she has been very diligent in working with this whole last week with the, with the issues of housing and student services and all that. Unfortunately, we're going to have to not have graduation. You know, a lot of our things that we typically do at this time of year, we're not having, obviously. You've gotten emails, most people are closing everything down, whether it be activity or what. So we're doing a lot of those. It's painful, but you have to do that. I mean, you know, we have, we have different things that we'd really like to do in the spring, but we're not going to be able to do those things. Any questions for the vice presidents or myself at this point?
I just want to make a comment that the worst is not over yet. We're still going to see cases jumping up here and down every six days for a while. The country really has done a poor job of self-isolation and everything, and everything we're seeing, led us down and coming through there, you know, trying to paint a doom picture, but until we, the society, do a better job of doing what they're asking us to do, it's going to be a lot longer going out than it looks like right now, and put a lot more healthcare workers at risk. So a lot of the thing is, we need to protect our students, protect our faculty, and protect each other, because it's going to get better, but it's going to get worse before it gets better. We haven't gotten to that spot, and we're starting to get better already. And, you know, we're insulated out here in the Midwest in some points, but we're really going to see, I don't think, after, you know, a lot of the travelers come back from spring break that left to places that they said, well, you know, we're not going to get any place where anybody's been, been at. But yes, they travel and they stop, whether it's by car-stopping, quick stops, or restaurants that eat all the way, slaving my airplane. We're going to see a rise in inspections here in the next 10 days or two weeks of spring break in. So just so everybody is aware of that, you know, it's still a serious problem. I feel for the students. I have a kid that's, we're, just got out of the middle school, graduated Chase State, and he was all excited about graduating Chase State, and they're not having it. And I said, well, you know, as long as you can be alive at Dad's, at middle school, that's going to be a more important part of that. So it's just something we still need to take serious, and especially make our young people take notice that it's, we're not past the hump yet.
Thank you, Dr. Hendricks. We...
Thank you, Dr. Hendricks.
We, anything that, on the phone, anything y'all want us to ask for and ask? The VPs? We, we're going to put out, we'll be putting a statement out. I'll be putting a statement out tomorrow, basically talking about things we're closing down and shutting some, you know, shutting the active, some of the activities down and then making sure, because our priorities, our students need to be safe. And I mean, it was, it was a horrendous process for Bev and housing and others. I mean, we basically had to, you know, a lot, a lot of, a lot of schools just basically closed their doors and didn't let students in or whatever. Obviously, we tried to be a little more student-oriented, student-friendly, and we made sure that we packed up their stuff and helped, and trying to figure out, we're leaving the things in their rooms if need be, and they can come pick them up, or we can ship them to them. So we're trying to do all we can do to help those students as well as putting our students online, as well as helping those students in more force. It was interesting, it almost looked like a kumbaya moment with Clayton. They were all out in the, out in the front yard out there, standing 10 feet away from each other. Kind of scared me at first. I didn't know what was going on, but there he was talking to them and telling them what we were doing. So I think we're all taking, we're all taking this very, very serious, and I know we, I know.
Very good.
And I know we need to. So any advice? You know, I read, Michelle sent us a thing today, Michelle Haley, Dr. Haley sent us a thing on, on, on making sure that we were being safe and doing the right things. And so we've got, there's a lot of information out there, I can promise you. Matter of fact, seriously, it has a channel for it, 121. And if you want to listen to it, it's, it's pretty frightening. So anyway, so, but, well, thank you very much. And have, no, have Kerry Kublick come in.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kerry Kublick. I'm the associate professor of vocal music here at the college, and this is my second year as Fine Arts Division Chair.
I'm going to have you come up here.
Oh, okay. Why not?
Hey, it works better, don't y'all?
Sure. Oh, sure. I think the other guys in the club do better.
I feel more important this way anyways.
Good.
So, yeah. So as I was saying, I'm in my second year as Fine Arts Division Chair here at the college. And I'd like to thank Dr. Holwerda for asking that I come and give you some updates as to what we're doing in the fine arts, and specifically in the vocal music area. I'll, we'll start back in September when we gave our annual state choir audition workshop. That is a time where we bring students from around the area for the chance to spend the day on campus perfecting, well, maybe not perfecting, but working on some audition music for some honor choirs coming up. It's a great recruiting event as well. The students spend the day working with me with some area teachers, and they get to interact with our students. And this past year, Dr. Nolte was able to come and speak to the students for a moment as well. Normally, we have about 80, in a good year, we'll have 80 singers. This past year, we had about 140, so that was a tremendous increase, so we're very happy about that. One of the things I really like to do and is a great joy for me is judging festivals. And this year was no different up until now in terms of... And this year was no different up until now in terms of going out throughout the region, different high schools, different middle schools to, to judge and to represent the college. By my count, I have worked so far with 28 choirs from around the region, about 12 smaller ensembles, and at least 75 soloists. So this is a great opportunity to go out, sort of have a captive audience and to show students and, in addition to students, show the instructors what I'm all about and what I, what I can do. In addition to that, of course, the concerts have been a great success. We are so lucky to be able to be back at Windhorst. That's such a beautiful venue, and we're delighted to, to be back there. This past concert that we gave about two weeks ago was very special, our Broadway concert. We were able to raise money for the memorial fund of an alumna who had passed away rather suddenly and quite tragically in June of 2019. She had come to me right before her final semester here at the college and said that she wanted to sing. And I said, wonderful, great, we have a place for you. So we were singing, she was singing with us. It was great to follow her career, her life after she left here, and it was just all the more tragic that she passed away so young and so unexpectedly. So I'm happy to report that we raised a little over $300 for her memorial fund, and I will be sending that along to her, to her fund later, later this week. But also, this past concert was so special because we got to inaugurate that fabulous new sound system. So thanks to Dr. Forghey for finding some money for that. That is a tremendous system, and my students and I are very excited, looking forward to everything it can do. It's going to be a great, a great tool for us and for everyone. In addition to some of these recruiting events, going out and judging, going out and coaching different schools, I've been invited to do a few things that were a little out of the ordinary. A few weeks ago, I coached the Comanche Middle School 7th and 8th Grade orchestras. Their director had contacted me and asked if I would be interested in coming and giving some input at a, at a concert for them. So that was a little different, but it was a lot of fun. I have not worked with string players in quite a while, so they liked what I had to say, so that was, that was good. Around that same time, I was asked to give a presentation to the Dodge City High School Chamber Orchestra on the mechanics and history of a pipe organ. So that was a lot of fun, got to show them how a pipe organ works, got to show them what the pipes are like, and they got to experiment for themselves on how to make some sound, so that was a lot of fun as well. We've also been performing the National Anthem a few times at some home basketball games. I sang, a few students sang, and we had a community member sing. She was a 6th grader actually that I had worked with at an honor choir, and she did a fantastic job. So it's a great way to show to the community, not just our students, but how our community is very supportive as well. We had a number of concerts off-campus as well, in addition to concerts at First Noted Methodist Church and Windhorst. In December, we were invited to bring some students and community members caroling at Trinity Manor, and then that same day, we caroled at the hospital, so that was a lot of fun. And it never ceases to, to really move me to see just how people connect with music and what a simple act that is, but how, how effective that is in brightening their day. Recently, we also performed at Brookdale on Valentine's Day, had a little bit of a sing-along, and that was, that was really special. That was a lot of fun. At this point, I was going to invite you to all the wonderful fine arts and musical events coming up at the rest of the semester, but unfortunately, it looks like that will not be happening. But I'm pleased to say that the art faculty is going to be working on some alternative, alternative deliveries for their, their student art shows. So while it won't be an in-person thing, it will be something that we'll be presenting, maybe through Facebook Live or, or something like that. So we'll still get to see some of the great artwork that our students produce. And we have some works in progress for some ways to share some of our vocal music with the community as well. We're not quite sure how that's going to look yet, but we're working on some, some ideas, so. That's, oh, the other thing I would hate to forget, we're bringing back our music theater workshop. I'm tremendously excited about that, in sort of in conjunction with the Depot Theater. So starting next spring semester, our students will have an opportunity to be involved in a, you know, really a sort of semi-professional musical production, either as cast members or tech crew, something like that. But it's a great way to build some bridges between the community and the college and also give some students and community members as well a great opportunity to pursue their love of the performing arts. So that's about all I had to say, so thank you for your time.
I'd like to add one thing. So we introduced Kerry as the Director of Vocal Music, but he's also the Division Chair for Fine Arts. And so he's one of the fine people on our campus who, who's been leading the other faculty to this transition. And you can hear the innovation and creativity that's there, so thank you.
Thank you.
Kerry, you weren't in the room a while ago, but I would like to tell you that we enjoyed the concert immensely, the Broadway concert.
Thank you.
And it was extremely well done.
Thank you very much.
And you did a wonderful job, and your students just were really good.
Thank you very much.
And they were, they were, you could tell they were having fun.
They were. They had a great time, so thank you very much.
Oh, was that Kathy or Maya?
This is Kathy.
Kathy.
This is Kathy. I was going to ask Kerry.
Yes.
He had all those 28 choirs and the festivals, how many scholarships did we get?
Uh, we've, I've distributed around 75 scholarships. I have confirmation from, this morning it was looking like 22, and I have about, well, the rest of the 75 to pursue, but then some others who I'm still trying to hunt down and track down.
I think that's awesome. I love building this program.
Yes, it's, we're having a great time doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kerry, what would your goal be?
You know, that would, that would be wonderful, you know, I guess what... It, it would be, it would be great to have, have a large ensemble again. I understand in, in years past, we've had some, you know, numerically strong ensembles. So, you know, we'll just see what's...
As you go.
Yeah, just increasing, increasing, and, yeah.
Of course you would.
Yeah.
Of course, there'll be more staff after that.
You have... That's right.
I love your energy.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We have our full support.
Thank you very much.
We may have to give Glenn a few lessons.
All right, well, he can enroll. He might be eligible for a scholarship, I don't know.
It could be more than a few.
Hey Kerry, I tried out for the, for the 7th Grade Choir and they put me in the band. So while I sing.
I can teach you to sing. Don't give up hope.
They pay me at church nuts.
Thanks, Kerry. Appreciate you very much. Okay, let's start, let's, let's go ahead and start the, the regular board meeting, okay. Board Policy Number 803.1, Personnel, Personnel Classifications and Contracts. Instructional Staff, Second Reading and Approval. May I have a motion, please?
Full move. Five seconds.
Dr. Hendricks and then Chairman Harshberg. Is there any discussion? If not, do we want to vote on it? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Okay. Number B, Policy, Board Policy Number 804, Professional Negotiation, Second Reading and Approval. Any motion?
Motion carries.
Second. Okay. No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay? Motion carries again. Thank you very much. Okay. Number C. Chairman Harshberg, this is too easy, okay?
You just made it easy.
Yeah, right. Three replacement host servers, title, title five grand. May I have a motion?
Full move. I know.
Okay, so I've got Maya first.
Yeah, Kelly's second.
Kelly's second.
Kelly's second. Okay, any, any discussion? I mean, we can have Jane discuss it if, if you need us to.
Where's Skylar at?
Skylar is keeping himself safe. He does have some previous health conditions which are putting him at, at risk, so he...
I was hoping when I see you, see you again.
Yeah, he's been on campus the last couple of days supporting faculty and us, but communicating remotely. But this couldn't be better timed.
All those in, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Unfinished business? None. New business? Review Board Policy Number 210, Board Trustees Code of Conduct. Mr. Curbs?
Code of Ethics, this policy has been part of the board's policies for many, many years. It's been modified, last modified in April 2019. And trustee Ramisaur, I think, you know, you had, you had brought to our attention the importance of bringing this policy to the board's attention. I don't know if you have any specific things that you would like to, to, to mention?
No, I just think that they need to realize the part of what the expectation is from all of us for one another.
And if you read...
Agreed, Kathy. Here's a sign.
Yeah, and if you read through the policy, a lot of it just makes kind of common sense in writing for people to read and kind of refer to and, and a good code of ethics to be followed by Meyer Horton. There is no action requested, it's just to bring this to the board's attention.
Okay.
Thank you.
Will we bring this back to, to vote? Okay.
It's in place.
It's in place. Very great. Business Services, you sit to see, Dan?
Yes, under anticipated expenses.
Okay.
It, it has bothered me often when I see this, that we have athletic claims and we have reimbursement for personal funds on page 26 of our agenda, $5,000 a month and $2,000 a month for the athletic claims. But we never get a printout of what, what those expenses are. And I kind of like to see that, and, and the reason I'm asking for that is I did see a printout of expenses for a previous administration, not this one. I want to make that very clear. And a previous Chief Financial Officer's work. And it was, to say the least, off the rails. You know, I mean, the expenses were not what they should have been, and I just want, I'd like to see what those are once in a while, just to, you know, or maybe every month, I don't know. What do we spend on 5,000?
It's like two months' worth here, isn't it? March and April? So the record on the board following anticipated for March 20 and April 20, so...
I'll see what we can do regarding these honors. Okay, thank you. And that's all I had on the item A, Business Services.
And then you had another one on?
On B. I'm, I, I think I said something in the other room about it. I'm alarmed that we are paying someone, and I know that, that this person's getting room and board, but they're getting an annual salary of $12,000 a year, plus room and board. That, I mean, we pay assistant coaches, most of the time I've seen them come across here...
$38,000.
Yeah, $36,000, $38,000.
$38 or $36, I thought.
This one's get... This one's getting 12 and, and room and board, and I understand room and board, it's worth something, but golly, it seems like we're underpaying this person.
So may I comment on it?
Yes.
Glenn and I talked about this when we went...
Christie, come up here instead of the rest of the board in here. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Okay. Over and around. Okay.
Over three.
So Glenn and I met about it when we did all of the federal changes to meet the FLSA guidelines back in January. Glenn and I did talk about it because it is under that threshold, and even when you kind of add in that room and board, it's very close. So we did discuss increasing the salary. Right now, with the room and board, like for the, for the whole entire 12-month period, it gets right up under that threshold of what we need. But we did discuss increasing it moving forward, what some other schools do. I went to the CACBO meeting with Dr. Forghey with the other CFOs, and I had a good discussion with them about how, like at Hutch, they're actually making those assistant coaches hourly employees because they couldn't get them to be over that threshold as salaried employees. And so that's something to consider. However, I don't think we want to see the amount of overtime that will come with someone who's on call 24/7 in the residence halls, traveling with the coaching staffs, recruiting, going on recruiting trips, things of that sort. So, so my answer is yes, I agree that we could address the salary. I think that might be, I think that could be something we propose maybe in next year's budget rather than right now while we're still going through the J1 process.
Okay, I think we'll...
Just one opinion.
Okay, I think we'll have to take a look at it.
Absolutely.
In, in the fall or when we do negotiations this summer or whatever, but, you know, I, I understand room and board, but everybody needs some pocket change, and...
Yeah.
This is truly, in this, this day and age, this is pocket change. You know, this, it, it really needs to be, it needs to be raised, I think.
Happy to look at it. I know, to compare to other schools, I don't have this year's study, but I brought that study last year that, that the journalist did on all of the coaches in the entire J-HOP conference. He did an open records request to all of the schools and got every single salary of every single coach on every single staff at all the schools. And there are a lot that do the same that we do, like Hutch. They have about five or six assistant football coaches that basically they have a house, and so they have the room and the board and things of that sort, and then they're paid around, I think they're closer to about $5,000 or $6,000 a year, which is why they then couldn't afford to hit that salary threshold with the FLSA change, so they changed them to hourly employees. But so some of the other schools, they do it as well, and they actually do it quite a bit less, which is interesting considering what Glenn and I read when we were going through the standard changes, so.
I don't think we want coaches keeping track of hours of coaching.
Correct.
And scouting and overtime.
No, we wouldn't be able to afford that overtime. There's no way.
So I, let's take a look at that in the summer, you know, do something about that salary.
I'll add that to my list for our budget changes for next fiscal year then.
And that is...
He might be transportation.
For...
We can make him a car.
Yeah, yeah. Where's he driving? He can walk from his house to the field. Yeah, where else is he going? We can get him a scooter. I'm just kidding.
Chairman Harshberg, they're out of orders.
People are tough.
I'm just kidding.
Kim Baller is totally right.
And, and I would like to say, I would like to say to you, Dan, that I was stunned by that salary too, even though I've seen it in, in January with Christie and Glenn brought all that material to us.
Yeah.
It was, it was some standard.
I'm, I'm happy to, I'm glad you guys pointed it out.
I'm glad you brought it up.
Absolutely.
One of the things I like to see us kind of develop a philosophy of is paying our employees as much as we possibly can and still do the other things that we have to do. You know, I mean, because they're what makes it work. They're what makes this place work. And, you know, if they're not making it work, then it's, it's not working for our kids.
Right.
And I just want to bring this point up. In athletics, there's a lot of coaches of... And I just wanna bring this point up. In athletics, there's a lot of coaches and people trying to get into coaching sometimes. And a lot of major colleges, they have unpaid assistant coaches that do it on their own money because they're doing, because they wanna get involved in the program, using that connection to try to get a bigger, better job down the road. I don't know that we, you know, Coach Coe is really a good guy to get coached. I think when it turns, takes changes happen and things are going good, but I don't think it's like, we're going on staff working for Nick Saban or something like that. We just wanted to take an unpaid job to stay very long in this phase. So I think, you know, I did look at that too. Realize the room board's worth a lot of money and stuff, but, you know, sometimes you'll get what you pay for. And that job even if it makes this person not stay very long, if you're not gonna have the continuity out of it, and if the, if the pay scale is that low, we're not gonna be able to, to probably attract very, very good candidates.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. Bigger institutions do do that. They do a volunteer coach with a stipend or something of those sorts, but absolutely great point.
So, and we'll look into it. I think that's a good idea here.
Thank you.
I agree with Dan also, though. We got a good, a good employee. Just hate losing a good employee with money, you know. And so I think that-
We have, we had over twenty applicants for this position, which is pretty exciting. And it's exactly, like he just said, a lot of it has to do with they want to be able to put on their resume that they were a full-time position coach at, in the J-Hop Conference and things of that caliber. So, but absolutely, I'm, I feel our last board was trying to get us to make the athletic salaries smaller. So it's a change of pace. So I'm happy to look at it.
But didn't we lose a psych director or a professional here?
Psychology.
Yeah, his, his family's from, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, no.
His family, his family's from Arizona. So he got a job in Arizona. So he was here for three years. But just like-
I just hope we don't lose them people over if they're really good.
Very good.
He is. He's moved, I think Dr. Huarda knows for sure, but he was, he's moving for his family was-
That's understandable. I just-
Yeah.
Just, well, we, we had a hundred, just off the subject a little bit, but we had over a hundred and five applicants-
Hundred and thirty.
Hundred and thirty for our basketball coach's position.
Yeah, I stopped looking at it after having five, I was not looking.
You take that back. You looked at them all.
I looked at them all.
Yeah, you take that back.
We, and I think we, I think we have a really good coach. And, and that's interesting. That's, that's, what's, what's the salary on that one?
Sixty.
Sixty.
Sorry to let the Democrat in me pop out, but that's-
A generous French benefit, or a generous French benefit.
That's true.
Sixty and a generous French benefit.
You said a generous French benefit?
Generous French benefit.
Yes, yes, agreed, Maya. Thank you.
Well, thank y'all very much. That closes that motion. Can I still prove?
To prove the consent.
A motion to approve the consent. I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those, all those in favor, well, any, the one discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those-
Aye, aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Glenn. Okay, that, that concludes our, our first part of this meeting. Okay, executive session.
How long do you think, fifteen minutes?
Fifteen minutes.
I recommend the board recess into executive session to discuss negotiations with the Professional Relations Committee of Dodge City Community College Faculty Association for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year pursuant to the employer-employee negotiations, exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B three. The open meeting to resume in this location at seven fifteen PM. In addition to the trustees, the President, Vice President Huarda, Vice President Forghey, Human Resources Director Olshwiger, and the college attorney should be included in the executive session.
Should, Clayton also be in there. Clayton, Dr. Tetra.
Dr. Tetra.
I still move. I agree.
And let's see, who's second? Was that Kelly Hendricks?
Ah, yes, yes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Fifteen minutes. Okay, it is seven fifteen. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move. So move.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Aye, aye.
Motion carries. Have a great night.